Malden School Committee Meeting, Monday, June 25th. The final meeting of the 2012 school year. And we'll start off by asking the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mayor Christiansen. Ms. Cabral.
Present.
Mr. Casucci.
Present.
Ms. Di Maria.
Here.
Ms. Doucette.
Here.
Ms. Froyo.
Yes.
Ms. Ayavino.
Yes.
Ms. Woldi.
Here.
Ms. Winslow.
Here.
Superintendent DeRusi.
Here.
Superintendent Casabian.
Here.
And Chief Representative Mallory McDonald.
Here.
Thank you very much. And we will continue on by asking the audience to join us for standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, as well as remaining standing for a moment of silence for those that we've lost in our community and overseas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. So, moving right through the agenda, seeing no motions to go into executive session, we will consider that portion closed, and we'll move right forward to the approval of minutes from the regular session on June 4th.
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Ms. Ayavino, seconded by Mr. Froyo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this point, we'll move on to the public comment section of the meeting. So if anybody has anything they'd like to say to the committee, now would be the time to come address. All right, seeing none, we will move right along. And at this point in the meeting, we're going to take a couple of things out of order, all of which are some recognitions that the school committee would like to make on our final meeting of the year. So, for the first recognition, I'm actually going to turn it over to Ms. Di Maria to recognize Vinnie Hung Tran. Ms. Di Maria.
Okay. Is it on? Thank you very much. At this time, may I ask Vinnie Hung Tran and his dad to come up, and the Don Tremont boys and their mom to come up.
Okay, so, should I stand?
Why don't you read it, then we'll go down.
Yeah, from there or from here?
From here.
Okay.
Wonderful. Okay, well, we have our two runner-ups for our branding campaign that was held throughout the schools in Malden. And our runner-ups are from our Forestdale School, Aiden and Michael Don Tremont, and we appreciate it. You did such a great job, boys, so thank you for coming. And we also have our winner here tonight, who is a kindergartner at BB School. His name is Vinnie Hung Tran. I hope I didn't ruin that name. And this I am going to present to you, Vinnie, on this 25th day of June for creatively describing our Malden Public Schools. Every job is a self-portrait of the person who did it, and you have autographed your work with excellence for many years to come in Malden. So, thank you.
And if it pleases the committee, we'll take a brief recess to go down and present with Ms. Di Maria the certificate and take a photo with Vinnie and the Don Tremont boys. Thank you.
Do you have a camera?
I have one. Go ahead.
Let's get one with you first.
Yeah. Just stop. Thank you.
One. Two. Three. Four. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Ten. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
You guys can join the rest of us, too.
The next presentation, we're back from our short recess.
You'll have to pardon and excuse, to apologize to MATV for the three probably short recesses we're about to take. The next, we're back to do our next presentation. We have a certificate of recognition that we'd like to present to a very special individual to the Malden Public Schools. So at this time, I'd like to invite up to the podium Dr. Margaret Adams. Dr. Adams has been with us for the past six years, and she has done a stellar job in her role in the Malden Public Schools, and I think she has embodied everything that we hope to see in our public servants. Margaret has strived for and continually achieved the idea that education is not just about the student, it's about the family. So I think that losing Margaret, you know, we are, we're happy for her, and we're happy that, you know, you're able to attain your next goal, but losing Margaret is a huge loss for our system that I'm sure won't truly be felt until, until you're actually gone. And so we would like to just present to you a very, very small certificate of recognition on this 25th day of June for your six years of service to not only the Malden Public Schools, but the families and the entire community of Malden. You've strived for excellence in all your work and achieved inclusion of the family in the educational process. Your service to this community has been invaluable. Sincerely, Mayor Gary Christiansen, chairperson and the entire Malden School Committee. Thank you, Dr. Adams. So, at this time, at this time, we'll, unless Dr. Adams has, do you have anything you'd like to say?
No. Thank you very much and to the Malden community and the Malden families. It has been an honor to serve them, an honor to serve the teachers of the Malden Public Schools. They're wonderful teachers, it's truly been an honor, and I'm humbled by all of the experiences I've had here in Malden. It's a great community, and it's with mixed feelings and great sadness that I have to go. So, thank you all very much, and continue your great work in supporting the teachers and children of Malden. Thank you.
Well, as one member, I'm sure we'd love to see you back someday. At this point, we'd like to invite the committee again to come down to the floor and join Dr. Adams in taking a quick photograph to submit this citation to her. Year. We've only got two more, two more to go, I promise. This next certificate, and we have, yep, two more to go. This next certificate is presented on behalf of the school committee members to one of our own. We would like tonight to recognize that this is the last meeting of our student representative, Mallory McDonald, who is off to UMass Lowell in the fall and has done a great job of representing her fellow students to this committee. So tonight, we'd like to present Mallory with the certificate of appreciation in recognition of your years of service to the Malden School Committee and on behalf of the Malden High School Community. You have been a valuable voice for the students of Malden and to the administration of the Malden Public Schools. Your efforts in policymaking and advocacy have proven you to be an effective representative on the committee, and we will miss you. Sincerely, Mayor Gary Christiansen, chairperson and the entire Malden School Committee. So at this time, we'd like to join Mallory again down on the floor. Mallory. And we are back. Our fourth and final recognition of the evening, and thank the audience for bearing with us. Our fourth and final recognition is to another one of our own, someone who has a couple more years of service than Mallory did to the school committee, but we'll recognize her nonetheless. This is to our departing Assistant Superintendent Nancy Casabian. The certificate reads of, to recognize you on this 25th day of June, of your 22 years of service not only to the Malden Public Schools, but also the families and the Malden community. Your service to this community has been invaluable, and your service to the school committee and the teachers and students of Malden has been equally as invaluable. We have appreciated everything that you've done for us and for them, and I know that, I'm sure at the end of the meeting, we'll have a chance to give our own personal tributes to Nancy, but until then, this certificate is presented to you on behalf of Mayor Gary Christiansen, chairperson, and the entire school committee at large. So for the final time, we'd like to present this to Nancy and join us on the floor for a quick photo. Nancy. I'm going to switch it. Janice, you can come back now.
Can we call the clerk back to this person?
All right, and we are back from our last, I promise, well, let's hope, recess, and we will continue on with the regularly scheduled meeting. Thank you again to Vinnie, to Nancy, to Mallory, and to Margaret for coming tonight and for their service to our school systems. Very much appreciated. So, we will continue on with our regular agenda. Public comment just closed, and we are heading right into superintendent's reports, so I'll pass it over to Dr. DeRusi.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Say chair, it's all right.
Thank you, Chair. At this accomplishments, I think the first thing I'd like to do is also acknowledge definitely the two people that are, have played such a big part in the district. I, when I first took over, I saw the combination Title I in ELL Director, and I asked myself, first of all, who in their right mind would take that job, but then how did they do it? And Margaret Adams was able to take two very difficult positions and merge them as one. And the piece that I feel will be the most difficult to try to replace in Margaret Adams was, is her ability to outreach to the community. And what she did for parents and language program for parents, and so much around literacy with parents, for kids. Margaret, you did a phenomenal job, big shoes to fill, and I understand now why somebody with your work ethic is the only person that could absolutely do that job, because you put tireless hours at it, and you will be missed in the district. So, again, I appreciate all you've done in my one year with you, and it'll be difficult to move forward with this, and you might get a call or two even in August for me to help get an idea on what the next move is as far as the two positions. And I think plenty of people over the course of the year, through a variety of opportunities, have heard, you know, what Nancy has meant to me in my first year as a superintendent. She was a phenomenal assistant to me. She helped ground me when I started to kind of spiral out, which I have the tendency to do sometimes. She keeps me more or less, she grounded me, and I think I needed that. She helped me with understanding the, the history of Malden, the history of the teachers, the history of the administrators, and I think as a new person moving in, and this is as I look to Margaret, who's going into a new district, and Margaret's done this before, you have to find that one person that has the history, and listen to those people, and they give you some pretty solid advice. So Nancy's always been there to guide me while still allowing me to basically be who and what I am and bring some of the things that I could see moving Malden forward with. She became the sounding board, so absolutely will be missed. And as I said to Mallory, you get to leave, but I'm going to be with this crew for the next couple of years, so every now and then tune on, watch us on cable, see how we're doing, and check in with me and let me know if we're doing everything the right way. Fair enough? Thanks. You know, accomplishments for the district, very, it's different in a year perspective. I try to, what can I say? There's, there's millions of little things that go on in this district every day, and I addressed some of them, you know, not too long ago, but I think we were faced with some big, big accomplishments. And right off the bat, coming in as a new superintendent, we had this new teacher eval looming over us from the state, and my, my focus really around eval, and that was probably one of the first things I spoke with Nancy about, was we need to get this down, we need to nail this. We don't want to be going forward and not have this new evaluation tool in place, ready to roll by June. And the amazing part about all of this was how fast a team was formed, how fast you had union and management, for want of a better term, working together on this. And, you know, as I said last month, we banged it out, we got it ratified, and that put us ahead of the curve of many other districts. And the trust that a district put into a new superintendent was huge, because I knew this was a priority at the state level. I knew that we really, this would be at maybe a tough thing to sell, but we did it. And, and to me, I think that was one of the biggest accomplishments, because for the first time as a new superintendent, I got to work with union leadership. Now, we started that process in January. Then by March, I realized that the district would be in budgetary troubles. So another huge accomplishment revolves around that little piece of work that started earlier, that union and management, we all got together, and I believe with the school committee's help, put together a budget, a difficult budget, because it reflected cuts. But we put it together, and the overall goal was to limit the anxiety on the teachers in the classroom. And I can stand or sit here and say, I feel we did that. We did that through being open with our communications, we did that by constantly talking. Marguerite and I did that by closing the door and yelling at each other in my office, and then opening the door, and everything was beautiful. But I feel, and the feedback I have received from the teachers was almost a thank you in a way to the union, to the school committee, to central office, because they knew it was not going to be good, but they, they felt they didn't have the anxiety to worry about it, that it was on the right track, that people were making good decisions for them. So, if I had to sum up the two years, I think working through that collective bargaining, and then a budget that no superintendent wanted to deal with in his first year, and four new, you know, four new school committee members. I mean, these are people, we all walked through this, and I include the mayor, for the first time. And I think people didn't recognize that, and I'll say, because we looked so calm doing it, and I think that was the piece. But there were moments, I didn't know where the next thing was going to fall, but we held it together, and I think teachers were able to teach right up until the last day of school. And the help putting the teacher pools together, Nancy guiding, Janice to, to my left constantly saying, Dave, you can't do that, we got to do it this way. And I'll go, Janice, but she's like, Dave, you can't. It was such a collaboration that I feel the accomplishment was, a community welcomed a new superintendent, the new superintendent was faced with some challenges, new school committee walked on board, there was transition, there were things happening, but you know what, we held it together, and we got through a very rough year. And I feel like I can sit here and say for the rest of my tenure, throw anything at us as a district, throw anything at us as teachers, throw anything at us as a school committee, we got through this year and got an innovation school off the ground. This was a tremendous year for a first year, and I think we all need to just take a step back, reflect on it, realize for many of us, this was a first run, and we did well. So I think the major accomplishment was, here we are, through the stress, through the crises, we're still solid, kids are still learning, teachers are teaching, administrators are administrating, and school committees are school committing, and we're doing okay with that. So my accomplishment to all of you, thank you. Now, the innovation school, which I want to thank Principal Bransfield, he came in yesterday, sorry, last week, and he talked to us about it. Councilman, can tell I was just with the council, can't you, for the last hour and a half? School committee, Representative Mr. Winslow brought some questions to us, again, answered the, we answered the questions fast, got them back. I looked to the school committee tonight for the vote, and I think, I look to you because this is not a work in progress. I mean, it is a work in progress. What we don't have is the final end result. We've done a lot this year on getting the facts, holding ourselves accountable, and getting the job done. Sometimes, we didn't have all the answers in front of us, but we were able to grab what we had, figure the facts, answer the questions as they go along. Tonight, you need to make a choice, a vote, to move this forward. Yes, it is a work in progress. Yes, there are some unknowns, but I think you, you already witnessed union buy-in, teacher buy-in, because the vote went big in favor of. School committee at the initial stopped buy-in, you've read the STEAM Academy proposal. Granted, things will change, but again, innovation is change. Innovation is constantly looking at yourself and asking, how do we move forward? How do we get better at what we do? The concerns raised, I think were answered to the best of the principal's ability, as well as there are still state regulations that govern this. It isn't a runaway train that the principal's going to look at me six weeks from now and say, hey, I'm breaking from Malden Public Schools, because he's linked to me for his budget, so I still hold the money in the purse strings. It's a, it's a calculated risk, and I think it's a calculated risk, because it puts ownership back in the hands of the people in the schools, and that would be the teachers, the administrators, and the parents. It's a good calculated risk. So on behalf of, that's my piece, basically swaying a school committee to really give this opportunity, a chance to grow. Right now, I feel there are other principals in this district taking just a step back, they want to watch this, and you may be looking at another proposal a year from now, or two more proposals a year from now, or if ELT, for whatever reason, may disappear because of state budgets. They're already primed for this, they know how to do this, so they may look to you. So, Principal, I look to him out there right now, Bransfield, I think you're leading a path, that you've done your work, you've done your due diligence, your staff has, they've cleared the path. They've put the foundation, and I look to the school committee to allow us to build and grow with this foundation.
Want to take that out of order? Do it now?
Uh, that, I mean, is, is that a motion?
Well, I mean, if, do you want to do the lead-in, or do you have more to say? I don't have anything else to say about the innovation unless, no. At this time, unless we have any objection, why don't we look to, seeing Principal Bransfield here, why don't we look to take docket item 7.2 out of order, the vote on the Linden Innovation Plan, now that we've heard the superintendent's.
You have the motion.
Yeah, motioning to move docket item 7.2 out of order. Seconded by Ms. Doucette. Do we see any objection? All right, we'll move 7.2 out of order, now seeing Principal Bransfield here, invite him up to the podium. The superintendent was able to give his take on where we are in terms of the Linden Innovation Plan, and now might be a good time just for fluidity to transfer it over to the members, to see if anybody has anything they'd like to add or discuss on the Linden Innovation Plan. And we will start over to our right with Mr. Winslow.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate the, the quick response from Mr. Bransfield and the superintendent on the questions I raised. I still am on, concerned that we're creating basically a semi-autonomous entity within the schools. There are legal implications for that, and I feel my obligation, you know, one thing I bring to this school committee is a legal background, and there, there's, I, I know there's a lot of due diligence that's happened on the academic front, and I know, and I have confidence in the principal and the teachers executing this, and I hope, and have confidence that this, this will be a good, good strategy. But I do think, as, as looking forward with anything, you know, one of the roles this committee can do is, is look at some of the consequences, and, and one of my, I mean, last meeting, we voted to go ahead and look at school reorganization.
we had, figure the facts, answer the questions as they go along. Tonight, you need to make a choice, a vote, to move this forward. Yes, it is a work in progress. Yes, there are some unknowns. But I think you already witnessed union buy-in, teacher buy-in, because the vote went big in favor of. School committee at the initial stop buy-in. You've read the STEAM Academy proposal. Granted, things will change, but again, innovation is change. Innovation is constantly looking at yourself and asking, how do we move forward? How do we get better at what we do? The concerns raised, I think, were answered to the best of the principal's ability, as well as there are still state regulations that govern this. It isn't a runaway train that the principal's going to look at me six weeks from now and say, hey, I'm breaking from Malden Public Schools because he's linked to me for his budget, so I still hold the money in the purse strings. It's a calculated risk. And I think it's a calculated risk because it puts ownership back in the hands of the people in the schools. And that would be the teachers, the administrators, and the parents. It's a good calculated risk. So on behalf of, that's my piece, basically swaying a school committee to really give this opportunity, a chance to grow. Right now, I feel there are other principals in this district taking just a step back. They want to watch this. And you may be looking at another proposal a year from now, or two more proposals a year from now. Or if ELT, for whatever reason, may disappear because of state budgets, they're already primed for this. They know how to do this. So they may look to you. So, Principal, I look to him out there right now, Bransfield, I think you're leading a path that you've done your work, you've done your due diligence, your staff has, they've cleared the path. They've put the foundation, and I look to the school committee to allow us to build and grow with this foundation.
Want to take that out of order? Do it now?
Uh, I mean, is that a motion?
Well, I mean, if, do you want to do the lead-in or do you have more to say?
I don't have anything else to say about the innovation unless, no.
Well, at this time, unless we have any objection, why don't we look to, seeing Principal Bransfield here, why don't we look to take docket item 7.2 out of order? The vote on the Linden Innovation Plan, now that we've heard the superintendent's...
You have the motion.
Yeah, motioning to move docket item 7.2 out of order. Seconded by Ms. Doucette. Do we see any objection? All right, we'll move 7.2 out of order now seeing Principal Bransfield here, invite him up to the podium. The superintendent was able to give his take on where we are in terms of the Linden Innovation Plan, and now might be a good time just for fluidity to transfer it over to the members to see if anybody has anything they'd like to add or discuss on the Linden Innovation Plan. And we will start over to our right with Mr. Winslow.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate the quick response from Mr. Bransfield and the superintendent on the questions I raised. I still am concerned that we're creating basically a semi-autonomous entity within the schools. There are legal implications for that. And I feel my obligation, you know, one thing I bring to this school committee is a legal background. And there's, I know there's a lot of due diligence that's happened on the academic front. And I know and I have confidence in the principal and the teachers executing this. And I hope and have confidence that this will be a good strategy. But I do think, as looking forward with anything, you know, one of the roles this committee can do is look at some of the consequences. And one of my, I mean, last meeting, we voted to go ahead and look at school reorganization. And I think that it's important that we have complete flexibility in moving forward. And my concern is in reading the law, the law limits our flexibility. And that's my basic concern. It has nothing to do with the work of the principal or whatever, that it's, I see there's a significant legal consequence here, that essentially, once we take this vote, if we do, there's this appeal to DESE that, you know, this school group can make that would take the final decision about what would happen with the school out of our control. And so that's really one of the big things that I'm concerned about. And I know and I appreciate, you know, there was also, so that's one of my concerns, that there's a legal consequence here, that we are potentially handing over the ultimate decision on whether this experiment is working or not out to DESE. So, and we also lose control over whether, for budgetary reasons or other reasons, a reorganization is in the best interest of all the students. It may adverse affect Linden, but that's, we're giving up some things there. The other thing is that in terms of, I know I did get some response on terms of the organization. The way I read the law and the regulations, I mean, right now, the principal is the applicant. There's not any bylaws or any legal entity that's created beyond that. So I think essentially what the vote would be is to authorize, you know, Mr. Bransfield, you know, to be the lead of this. And it's not clear, I mean, I know that there's some listing of people that will be on some committee, but that does not, that, the document does not describe how those people will be appointed or elected, doesn't say how they'll serve, doesn't, another factor there that I know right now, it says it will be a school council. Under our current policy, school councils are considered, you know, public entities that have to post their meeting agendas and have, and meet public meeting laws. The answer I got back on that was that they're not, they don't see themselves tied to that. So I have just questions on that aspect. I'm not questioning the legal, I mean, the academic effort here. I, I'm just questioning the consequences here. You know, one of the things, I think we will probably have to have a meeting over the summer, maybe in the next couple of weeks, because we couldn't have an executive session. Perhaps what we can do is postpone this vote for two weeks until our school attorney is here to, you know, respond, you know, that's the legal expert. I just have concerns that this is a significant commitment. Once this vote is taken, you know, under the law, we have to provide resources to the school unless we have good reason to say they're not achieving their academic ends, even though overall as a district, it might be in our best interest. I mean, we can look at what, you know, if we had to think it over with charter schools right now, I think everybody's view is that perhaps the charter school is getting a richer amount of resources than perhaps their student body deserves for a variety of things. So that's my concern of having the flexibility. I mean, I think the other thing that I would ask our attorney is, why can't we do this and have, implement this implementation without having the DESE having the final say over whether it, well, can't we do it right now legally? What's holding us back from just implementing this innovation plan as a school improvement plan, working with the union on the side letter, and just doing it in innovation with ourselves without having the legal consequences that come with it? So that's where I am right now. I really cannot vote in favor of this without, you know, making sure we've done the legal due diligence, because this could be a permanent, you know, change to the way the schools are administered. And I think we really have to think of it. It's a serious thing. I know there was a talk, it's a, you know, we'll evaluate in a few years, but that evaluation will be narrowly focused on achievement, which I hope and have confidence will be good. But I think, you know, we're, one of the reasons why we're pursuing the reorganization plan is because we don't know what the financial environment's going to be coming up. And do we need to take, do some drastic steps just to survive, let alone innovate? So that's my concern. And, you know, that, I just, I think it's a serious vote. It has long-term consequences that may not be as easily undone as we think. And I just, that's where I'm sitting right now. So I appreciate all the work that's gone on, and I want to see this happen, but I think we do have, we have to do our own due diligence in terms of making sure that this is a step that is in the best interest of all the students of the city of Malden. So that's where I'm at right now. So thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, parting my tardiness, I believe the next lady is Mr. Ayavino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't share Mr. Winslow's legal background. I don't question that at all, and I accept what he has to say. However, I've been a proponent of this way back. Even last year, I wanted to look into it, but this year, back in October, Dr. Derusi and I went, attended a meeting at the Paul Revere School, and there were a number of concerns and questions I had going in that were answered very satisfactorily at the time. I know that Dr. Derusi is in favor of this. I think that there are some issues there, one that I spoke to Mr. Bransfield about, that is not really a concern and will be handled in-house. I think that the plan that you've put forward is very ambitious. As I said to you, it's very thorough. I'm happy to vote on it tonight. It is, it does have implications, yes. But, you know, I think the one constant in education these days is change. It sounds like an oxymoron, but it's true. Everything is changing before our eyes, and it's changing at warp speed. And I think that you have to, and this isn't a trend that you grab onto like, you know, the open classroom. This is something of substance. There's a great deal that's gone into the STEAM plan that you've put forward. It's very thorough. The objectives there are very ambitious. And yes, it will have to be tweaked. And yes, there may be assessments that come down the road that will have to be done, and there are wrinkles in everything. But I believe that they can be ironed out. And I believe that within two to three years, we should see, your school should see, the parents should see some real forward progress on this. I'm ready to move on it tonight. I think it's a plan that's well worth the risk. And I don't even want to use the word risk. Strike that from my discussion. I don't think it's a risk. It's a concern, maybe, but I think that we retain enough control. This committee retains enough control budgetarily and in other areas that if there is, if the train starts to go astray, we can put a halt to it. We can slow it down. One man's opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayavino. Other comments from the members? Mr. Wilday.
Just a, just a quick one. You know, I too, and I actually, I should note, I do think, Mr. Ayavino, now that you say it, now that we have time to remember it, you do deserve a little bit of credit for this idea, because you've been talking about this for years. And it's funny, when you mentioned it just now, I sort of remembered to myself that even as a new school committee member, I remember you talking about the idea of this innovation school. I do want to applaud the work that Principal Bransfield and his team have done. You know, this is, it's equally as risky as it is exciting. You know, and I, you know, I do share and I understand some of the concerns that Mr. Winslow has, but it's not going to stop me, I think, tonight from supporting this plan. You know, I worry a lot about the idea of the policy autonomy. And I was looking, and when I was reading through your answers, you know, I think you made note of the possibility of uniforms moving forward. And I am a strong, strong opponent of school uniforms, and I think you'd have to show me a lot of data, as you mentioned in here, that, you know, find the educational evidence that would matter, but that would be something that you would have. You would have that autonomy to do so. So, you know, it's a tough decision to make to give up a lot of that autonomy. However, I am fully confident in your ability to lead us over the next few years and to see what this innovation school will produce. So I think I'm willing to take that risk. So I'll support Mr. Ayavino on that one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wilday. Now, we're going to hear from Mr. Foyle.
Yes, just briefly, I'd like to say I agree with the concept. I think that there's too much for our students to gain turning this down. I think the school, they've done a great job, Rich and his staff, putting this whole thing together. And like I said last week, I just like the project-based, that you're going to, project-based that you're going to have at the school, which is, which will be very good for the students' learning. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Foyle. Anybody else wish to comment? Ms. Doucette.
Mr. Bransfield, I applaud your efforts. I think the innovation school will be great. I'm a little concerned about what Mr. Winslow did bring up. However, I trust the studies and your responses, so I would be willing to vote on it tonight. So I'm excited for the students. I think it's a win-win situation.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Doucette. Any other questions, comments, queries? If not, one final say from the school superintendent? Now that you've heard everything, what say you?
Well, I think, again, I also hear Mr. Winslow's concerns. There are other innovation schools in the state. They are open and willing to help new innovation schools move forward. They probably already bumped into some of these issues and have worked through them and around them. I will, I know there is a deadline quickly approaching on a grant opportunity, which is why the vote, if we were to postpone the vote, then we're going to miss a potential funding source for this. And I look to the school committee to, you know, do what they believe is in the best judgment of the district. We will keep any concerns should this pass right out there on the table. And from this minute on, depending the vote, my involvement becomes more, because if this is the direction we're going, then I will be involved working with the principal a lot closer in the upcoming year. So I will always keep the best interest of the school committee at those meetings and be the conduit for any concerns or complaints or worries you might have to be part of that and bring it into the building and work it through.
Okay, Superintendent, if I might, from the chair, just so I get this straight by, and this might address Mr. Winslow's comments, by us voting tonight, and if it's in the affirmative, we apply for the grant. Is that correct, Mr. Bransfield?
Well, the entire plan has to be in, except for, I think, grant is one piece of it.
Right.
Grant funding comes with, you know, getting innovation status, but everything has to be in, by the 29th or, we will, we have to reapply.
But I guess where I was going with it, and again, I'm trying to, you know, go where Mr. Winslow's going. If we do all that, you know, we vote tonight, we submit the package, the application's there, the grant application's part of it, it doesn't mean we wouldn't get another bite of the apple. Let's say some of the things that Mr. Winslow's discussed here tonight materialize and they alter our opinion. We could come back after the application is submitted and still make alterations, or is it, once we submit this application, we're going down no matter what?
The plan itself is a form of the delegate, will be through the entire five years. And if we see things that work, we keep them, if we see things that don't work, we can change them.
Okay.
As far as council and meetings and what bylaws may be and what a 501(c)(3) might look like for us, I mean, those are all things that will do with, you know, with legal representation, you know, before we even get to it, make sure that everyone's in this, just tonight.
Okay.
You know, the first shift, the school, not going to do anything that's going to jeopardize the city, you know, up all my stature here in the city.
But if we don't take this vote tonight, we'll never know.
If you don't take this vote tonight, it doesn't go through.
We have to go back. Okay. And just so, one other question to the superintendent, so I'm trying to keep a running tally. If we were to do this tonight, you submit the application, everything goes well, are you at liberty to say tonight what I should be thinking going into next year and the year after in terms of an impact on the budget? Would there be any? Mr. Bransfield, would you know at this point?
You know, budget, I don't have, I didn't ask for budget autonomy, so whatever happens in the budget...
Here in the city, it comes from, you know, from this body here. I'm not doing any, everything that I do has to go through all of you. So this idea of, and I think one of the issues is this 501(c)(3), the thought that I'm going to create this 501(c)(3) and raise all this money and we're, you know, going to, you know, do things, we can't do anything without your permission, I guess is the bottom line. So, you know, everything here that, you know, that I've recommended we do in the plan, again, it's fluid, it can change all the time in, you know, this body and the superintendent has control over it.
Okay, so said in other words, if we were to do this tonight, it doesn't commit the city years out?
It commits us that we're going to go forward with an innovation school. That's what, what it looks like five years from now could be completely different than what it is today. But it commits us that we're going to move forward, you know, with the autonomies that were listed there, everything except budget autonomy. But again, you know, anything that's done, we do in collaboration with the school committee.
Okay, maybe I'm not, I don't know if I'm asking it correctly. Superintendent?
It sounds like you're basically asking the simple question, what will the budget impact be down the road?
Yes.
Again, I mean, Rich, Rich could, Rich's building could come up and say, we need 15 more teachers to, for STEM. And I could look at Rich and say, well, I can't give you 15 more teachers for STEM because it's not in the budget. And Rich would have to deal with that because there's no budget put aside for 15 STEAM members, new teachers. I think what's different here is if Rich looked at me and said, well, the Broad Institute wants to fund two of those positions, then I look at Rich and say, okay, then we put that through our payroll, we take the money from the Broad Institute to come in and fund those positions. So Rich would be able to find a funding mechanism that would help him sustain some of his needs if his needs were above and beyond what the budget constraints were allowing him to go for.
Got it, okay.
So will this cost down the road? If, in a line item, Rich had $52,000 for the Linden supplies. And Rich looked at me and said, well, I'm really not interested in putting all that into paper. I'm going to buy this for my science lab because it's part of the STEAM program. I would look at Rich and say, all right, but you will need paper someday. And he will say, well, I have another person that's willing to supply me with paper. And I'm like, okay, here's your budget, do what you need to do with your budget. I think as we start to, some of the hesitancy I'm hearing too is, well, we're talking about reorgs, we're talking about alignments, how does this all play out? I don't have that answer right now, and I don't think Rich would have that answer right now, but I think the school is still part of the Malden Public Schools. And it answers to this body in one shape or form. This, I would need to sit with Rich a lot over the summer and start to say, okay, I get ideas you have, but, you know, we have WEDA training coming in, which is from the state, and your teachers have to be certified in WEDA, so how are we going to work that in? Are the challenges of how do you match district curriculum initiatives versus maybe something that's more project-based learning? But again, other districts have schools like this. And our job is not to try to go this alone, but to go out and seek how they're doing it, which is part of the exploration. The Linden staff went to other schools, and we need to ask those questions. I need to ask superintendents, how do you balance it all? How do you move a district towards foreign language in the eighth grade, but yet you have this innovation school that's kind of looking at you saying, eh, but you're all emptying into one innovation school? They deal with this in other districts. If I had some of those legal questions earlier in this process, I think I would have been more equipped to answer to them for you. I will do my due diligence from here on in to meet with Howard over the summer and put it all together and lay out. I will ask other superintendents how they dealt with those legal issues, and I'll be able to come back to this committee with a more focused answer sheet. I mean, looking at the legals, I don't have those answers right now. So my concern would be to hold up the vote at this moment if that was the decision. I think we move forward and we deal and we work and we learn and we make it work.
All right, so once again, Superintendent, by us voting in the affirmative tonight does not commit the city any way, shape, or form years one, two, three, four, five out in terms of dollars.
Financial budgets.
Right. That comes back to us. That's the flexibility. Right. That comes back to us. That's the flexibility part.
The budget is still in there.
Okay.
If there's not budget, it's on there.
Okay. Any other follow-up questions? Mr. Winslow?
I just had a question about the, the amount of the grant that is at jeopardy here or whatever. How much money is that?
How much is at stake?
The funding is about $50,000, up to $50,000, dependent on the size of school, Linden schools, fairly large schools, so I would think we'd probably be entitled to the $50,000. It's a next-generation grant, and one of the things, one of the reasons I applied for that grant is $12,000 can go directly towards technology out of the grant. So.
Thank you.
I mean, this is, you know, this is also, you know, I've been working on this for nine months, this has been going on. We've been going, you know, been writing this starting back in October. My staff has, you know, gone over and above the call of duty and going out and looking at schools and talking with principals and dealing with superintendents, you know, outside the district. We've gone to, you know, numerous meetings with the state and the DESE. You know, and I'm, I'm a little taken aback coming in here on the, kind of the 12th hour and being asked questions that we could have answered back in October when this process, you know, when this process started. So I, you know, with that said, I, you know, I, again, I just wanna reiterate the fact that this was an overwhelming vote by staff. It was something that, you know, people have worked, you know, awfully hard on to make sure the due diligence, you know, was done. And I think it's, what it does for the city of Malden is, Malden is, it gives students and it gives parents opportunities, you know, that are different certainly from a lot of other communities at this point. So as far as a reorg goes, you know, that could happen, you know, down the line. It's not something that's gonna happen overnight. But even with a reorg, let's see where the Linden School goes with this because it could bring us to a place that we decide is a good place that we wanna be. To, you know, to not vote tonight and let this go by the wayside, I, I just, you know, personally, you know, based on all the things that my staff has done to get it to this point, I'm sure would be pretty disappointing to them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bransfield. One other light, hold your motion, Mr. Weldy. Mr. Avino?
I, if Mr. Weldy's gonna make the motion, I'll accede to him and I'll be happy to second, be happy to second his motion.
All right, Mr. Avino has made a motion. It's seconded by Mr. Weldy. And Madam Clerk, just so we're clear, the motion reads as follows. What's the wording of the motion? Or Super, yeah, do you wanna make, Lenny?
Thank you, Mr. Yaman. The, the school committee recognizes the hard work that's gone into this and is willing to make a vote to approve the innovation school model for the Linden School.
Okay, thank you. And again, we have a second from Mr. Weldy. Everybody clear on the motion? So now that it's formalized, any last-minute discussion? Chair has none. I'll have the clerk call the roll. Please.
Ms. Cabral, Epstein. Mr. Kusucci?
Yes.
Ms. Di Maria?
Gladly yes.
Ms. Dusset?
Will yes.
Mr. Froyo?
Definitely yes.
Mr. Avino?
Yes.
Mr. Weldy?
Yes.
Mr. Winslow?
No.
Mayor Christensen?
Yes. The yeses have it, motion is approved. Okay, please keep us posted. Good luck. Back to the superintendent's report.
I think I have already talked to the new education eval tool. Very pleased and very happy to say that we have ratified our contract to bring that tool onboard. We will, I've already had two days of professional development arranged for our evaluators, our administrators, to begin to not only become familiar with the tool themselves, but to begin the, the long two years of learning how to evaluate and supervise staff under this new evaluation tool. My budget update, again, as I said earlier, under accomplishments, I think we did a great job. I have had two meetings with the City Council Budget Subcommittee Meeting. Today was just before this meeting, 5:30 to 6:45. We once again reviewed it, we once again went over it. I think, again, we have this on the consent agenda. I, I believe our budget, as handed to us, the bottom line of $56,164,000 and change is a good budget. I would not be doing my job as superintendent to say I would have liked a little bit more, but I would have. I felt we had to make cuts, and we, we did that. We, we reduced our staff to accommodate not only the budget, but also a little bit more so that we could hire what the mandates of the state call upon us to hire, which in the way would be special needs classrooms, any ELL classrooms, because those numbers are going up. So while the City Council, I believe, votes on the final budget, I, I can sit here and say that the Subcommittee did their due diligence, school committee members attended the Subcommittee meetings, they're, they're aware of the situation, the staff aware of the situation. I think we did a great job, and that'll be up to the school committee right now what to do with that budget.
Okay. Any questions of the superintendent on his report? Okay, Chair has none. Moving on, we're now at item five, which is Subcommittee Reports. And the first Subcommittee Report will be presented by Mr. Winslow regarding policy.
Yes, the, the Policy Committee met and we discussed a couple items. We reviewed the bullying policy and its implementation and our policy on, on head lice. And I do have to appreciate Ms. Sabine, Ms. Chase, who made the presentation on the bullying. The, the principals all provided information. And I, I think the great news is that the training has all happened for the teachers and the students, so that's happening. The, the administration in each school is implementing the policies. I, I think the good news is that because of the education and those efforts, that incidences are, are being addressed very quickly. You know, there's, there's not incidences of, of, you know, repetitive behaviors, so very few incidents of bullying are being reported. And I think they're, they're, and I think that's a great credit to everybody at the schools, that the policy's being followed, and I think we're having great results at, at all the schools. So, so that's, I don't know if Ms. Di Maria or Ms. Dusset would have anything on that, but it, I think, was a very good report from all the schools, and I appreciate the efforts of the superintendents and principals of getting that information together. So, on the, the policy related to head lice, you know, just for briefing on that is, the policy has been that students are not allowed to return to school until their nits are gone, and they've been treated for that. Ms. Reynolds, in the, in the school physician, came and, and talked about that. There was some parents who were wondering if we could relax that policy and that if treatment had started, that they could come back to school. I think after talking to Ms. Reynolds and the physician, they both agreed we should stick with our, our no-nits policy. And I think the committee left it at that, that there was no need to change the policy. So, so that's the basic report, porting back that the bullying policy is being implemented effectively and, and then that there's, there's no need to change the lice policy. So that's our report. Thank you.
Okay, good report. Any questions of the chairperson of policy? Okay, hearing none. Thank you once again, Mr. Winslow, and to the team. The next order of business will be a Subcommittee Report out of budget, and this will be led by Mr. Avino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I have to report on the Budget Subcommittee is that the, all the members of the Budget Subcommittee have met along with Dr. Derusi, and we've sat in on the meetings at the Finance Committee of the City Council. I think Dr. Derusi has made a valiant effort over and over again to explain his budget from fiscal 2012 and fiscal 2013 going forward. It, as he has stated, is a budget that's in flux. It is a tight budget, but it's a budget that we can survive on. As one member of that Subcommittee, I'm ready to move that budget tonight. I'm very well satisfied with Dr. Derusi's explanations and the work of Steve Winslow and John Froyo, Adam, and I, and myself. With what, with, you know, the time constraints that we operated under, we received that information that we had to move on it early on in May, and here we are at the end of June, and I think we'll probably beat the state in terms of getting our budget in order before the House and the Senate Conference Committee come, let us know what they're gonna do. So just to reiterate, I'm ready to move and, and vote in favor of the budget tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Avino. So do you wanna wait until the consent agenda, or do you wanna address this now? Much pleasure.
Why not move on it now?
Okay, so Mr. Avino has asked that we take item number three on the consent agenda out of order. Does the Chair have any objection? Chair has none. So now we have the approval of the FY 13 budget. We have a motion by Mr. Avino. We have a second by Mr. Weldy. We're now open for discussion. Any comments, queries, concerns on the proposed fiscal year 2013 budget? Mr. Avino, you really have done a good job.
Oh, no, 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 no. Just one of many.
All right, Superintendent, do you want?
Dr. Derusi deserves it.
Okay.
I, I will give credit back to the people around me.
Okay, yeah, I, I too, from the chair, being able to, you know, place this task in the hands of, you know, such able-minded committee members was very helpful to me in my first six months as mayor. So I wanna compliment the Budget Subcommittee as well as the rest of the team, who I know spent countless hours reviewing and suggesting and working with our new school superintendent. So compliments to you all. So with that being said, when we do move to adopt the budget, we typically call for a roll call, and so I'd like to do the same here. So, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Mr. Kusucci?
Yes.
Ms. Di Maria?
Yes.
Mr. Dusset?
Yes.
Mr. Froyo?
Yes.
Mr. Avino?
Happily yes.
Mr. Weldy?
Yes.
Mr. Winslow?
Yes.
Mayor Christensen?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Good work, everyone. So now back to the regular docket. We have a Subcommittee Report, I'm told by the Technology Subcommittee, and this will be spoken to by Mr. Weldy.
Just a quickie, an update on the, a Comcast update on the Internet Essentials Program. It, the Internet Essentials Program has made its way into our school system, and I do have some supporting documents that I'll send to you all a little later on. But Comcast is doing their best to reach out to all of our Malden families. So we do now have flyers and brochures out there, and they're being translated into 12 different languages, including Spanish, Arabic, Oromo, Somali, Tibetan, Chinese, Haitian Creole, Portuguese, Mong, Korean, Vietnamese, Polish, and Russian. So at our next meeting after the summer recess, hopefully we'll have some participation statistics for you as well. But, you know, I do wanna thank the Chair for finding this opportunity, as well as thanking Comcast for their willingness and their participation in working with Malden families, because it is making quite a difference, I believe. So just a quick update on that front.
All right, thank you, Mr. Weldy. Any questions of the membership? Okay, hearing none. We're now at item five deliberations, which we don't have anything under there. So now we're moving on to the consent agenda. Item number one is the Contract of Extension for Malden Transportation, and this will be spoken on by Mr. Avino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this is an item that we tabled from our last meeting at the request of the Chair to make sure that the city would not be in violation of Chapter 30b. Just as, as a quick recap, the Malden Transportation Incorporated has asked for a contract extension of the existing school contract under the current terms and the costs for an additional three years. As you can see from the packet that, that I had included, and I included a cover sheet from Chapter 30b from the Office of the Inspector General Gregory Sullivan, and, and the following page, item number eight that's boxed in, that talks about contract exemptions, one of which is any direct services delivered to children with special needs, such as transportation. So the issue of a possible violation of Chapter 30b really doesn't exist. And just a couple of other items, a, a couple of other items. The Malden Transportation has been operating with this contract since 2002. At that time, when the contract was put into effect, they were transporting 150 students. They are transporting now in excess of 300 more students, 300 students, which is 100% increase. It's resulted in the transportation company having to purchase at, at a great cost additional vehicles to satisfy the need and to sustain additional insurance costs. Most telling, of course, is the 10-year gas price. When the contract was put into effect, gas was $1.50 a gallon, the good old days. And of course, now even with the drop in gas prices, they're still paying 100% of an increase. A lot of the drivers, most of the drivers and monitors live in Malden. It's good for our local economy. And finally, surrounding communities, for example, Everett pays more than Malden does for their transportation of special needs children, and they transport fewer children. So I, I would simply ask for a motion and a vote, either up or down, of the proposal put forward by the Malden Transportation Incorporated to extend for a period of three years under the current terms and no additional costs, the current contract for transporting special needs students.
Okay, Mr. Avino. So that's put in the form of a motion?
It is.
Seconded by Mr. Winslow for purposes of discussion. Let's hear, well, let's hear any, let's hear from the school superintendent first.
I've been asked to get the legal play out on that, Chapter 30. And unfortunately, Howard Greenspan, our attorney, has suffered a personal loss, so I haven't been able to get that information back.
Do you mail this to Howard?
I could get that to Howard, but I, I've talked to him, and like I said, he wanted to get, dig around on that, to dig a little further. But unfortunately, he did, his family suffered a, a personal loss, his mother-in-law. So he asked me to kinda table and go slow on that right now. So I'll get back to him next week when services and everything else has been taken care of.
I, I understand.
One second, Mr. Avino. I'm gonna go to Mr. Avino, then we'll open it up for other questions. Mr. Avino?
Thank you, Mr. Yaman. No, I understand that, and, and I'm quite sympathetic with his loss. And of course, we'll, we'll table it. My only concern is that are we gonna wait until September, since we don't have another meeting scheduled?
Right. I, I'm gonna try and address that momentarily.
Thank you.
Because I know Mr. Avino's done a lot of work on this. So let's hear from other members first, though, to see if we're on the right track. Are there any other comments? Everybody understands the motion? Mr. Winslow?
No, I, I guess I'm confident of the material that Mr. Avino's presented on the legal matter, that, that this exemption is there in the law. So, so I, I don't have any qualms about moving or moving ahead, subject to confirmation of a school attorney that this is the current law, so.
Okay. That's what I was gonna suggest as well. Mr. Avino, would it be okay if we condition the vote on, you know, our school attorney saying that what you have identified is indeed accurate?
Absolutely comfortable with that.
Okay, so you'll be okay with that?
Yeah, based on that condition, that we can move the forward, move forward, move the vote forward based on what Mr. Greenspan says.
Okay, so, Mr. School Superintendent, would that be fine?
Yeah, I'm good with that also.
Okay, so he's fine with that. So we have a motion. It's been seconded, and now we have a further amendment, I guess an amendment to the original motion, which is conditioning it on our attorney, Howard Greenspan, confirming what Mr. Avino has found. So there's an amendment made by Mr. Avino. It's a friendly amendment. He's accepted. It's been seconded by Mr. Weldy. So everybody's clear on the motion now. Any other discussion? Ms. Cabral?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a quick question. I am glad to say that this isn't gonna cost us any additional monies going into our budget, but I have a concern regarding the incident that happened last week, or a couple weeks ago now, regarding the ELC student. And what policies have they changed? What's occurred with that? And what are they doing to go from here forward?
Okay, School Superintendent?
I submit, I did a thorough investigation of this, and I presented it to the Chair at our weekly meeting. Really, the end result is there were no criminal charges being pressed. My, just, my findings were relatively just based on what happened. The finding I, I arrived at was the language of the bus driver and monitor, for the record, as it was put into the police report and as it was told to me, said they handed the child off to a child off to a school monitor, an unknown school monitor, and that the child left with that said monitor. The one piece of evidence that swayed me was a video of all the children coming in with monitors, meaning they were walking through the same door at the ELC from the buses. Working with the principal there, we were able to identify every child that walked off that bus, Bus 101, with the monitor. So based on my evidence and based on the testimony of the driver, I came to the conclusion that if that said driver did pass that child on to a school monitor, be it unknown or not, which is a recommendation I put, that bus monitors should not be giving anybody to people they don't recognize, if they handed that child off, then that child should have walked through the door. I have no record of that. I've been in constant back-and-forth with the owner of Malden Taxi, gave him my findings, and he has addressed certain issues in protocols. I believe he has protocols in place. He walked me through them. I believe there's safety features on the buses. My investigation was not to prove anybody was guilty or not. I did due diligence for the district, and my recommendation to Ann was that if a child is absent, whether the child was out one or two days prior to that, you have to make sure it's clear to the teachers you call home, because that was on the school part, that this young child had been out two days in a row, when she didn't show up to school at that moment, someone said, oh, she must still be out sick. So my recommendation at that point to Ann was you have to stress that when Barbie isn't in that seat, you get that news to somebody. But based on the evidence and the reports, if said driver passed that child to a monitor, that child should have walked through the door. We have absolute footage of every child getting off that bus. So Lester has been cooperative. Lester will do what he needs to do to make sure that his bus drivers are prepped on that. At this moment, that's where, there was no police investigation. I did my piece, just if blame fell on the school, we would have dealt with it, but right now, based on that video evidence, ELC people, meaning their paras and their monitors, were there doing their job, and every child that was handed to somebody walked through that door. So that's where I left my investigations. I don't know where this is going right now, from the parents' perspective, but I think we did our part as a school to make sure that we had answers.
Ms. Cabral?
Okay, so my question is, at the ELC?
Yes.
Do students, when they are not in their seats by a certain hour, the parents do not get a call?
They should. That's what was, that's my recommendation to Ann, to tighten up on that. This child had been out two days previous.
We don't have a policy on that?
Yeah, we do, and that's my piece. In my investigation, I said that's where, if anything, ELC needed to tighten up on, was that if a child's not in, don't assume because Dave's been out two days sick that the third day, he's still out sick. Follow up with that.
So every day, they should have been, there should have been a call?
Yes, and there was prior to that. They knew she was out sick two days.
It was just that third day, they did it.
They assumed that she was out sick again.
Okay, so hopefully, they will tighten up on that.
Well, that's, I mean, that's a message, I think, for all buildings, you know, even if it's a high school kid, and you don't see, if you don't see a high school student two or three days, it shouldn't get that far. Somebody should be calling and saying, why isn't Dave in class?
I have a seventh grader, and I get a call.
And that's the way it should be.
And that's how it should be.
Right.
Thank you.
So based on Ms. Cabral's question, Superintendent, you do recommend that was, I mean, is that an anomaly? Does that happen often? I mean, it must be not enough for you to recommend tonight that if the condition checks out, we extend the contract.
I don't think that would, no, we haven't had.
So it's a rarity where you get that kind of?
At this, yeah, I mean, yeah, this was a first. I mean, we, how many drop-offs and pickups at ELC happen in all our districts? I mean, I think this was just, it was just one of those things, and what I set out to do was find out, okay, who, what, where, how did it all happen? And I, and we were also dealing with a young, a four-and-a-half-year-old with significant cognitive needs, so, you know, you give it time, because with that child, the more the mother talked to her, the more the story started to come back, but I never could establish, even through her, where you got off the bus. She just, her, it was just, she was on the bus, there was no bus driver, she was scared, but she couldn't pinpoint for me, was it in front of the school? Because, again, I just wanted to get the facts, because if the school had dropped the ball, then I would have been down the school. And there was a piece where they should have called, and that's in my report to the Chair.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Cabral?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cabral. Good question. So any other discussion? Everybody knows where we're going here. We have a motion that's been amended by Mr. Iavino. Mr. Winslow, I believe you seconded it. So why don't we call the roll? Madam Clerk?
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Mr. Kasucci?
Yes.
Ms. Di Maria?
Yes.
Mr. Dusset?
Yes.
Mr. Froyo?
Yes.
Mr. Iavino?
Yes, on the amendment, yes.
Mr. Weldy?
Yes.
Mr. Winslow?
Yes.
Mayor Christensen?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. So Superintendent will be in touch with you, Mr. Iavino. We'll hopefully have it by the end of the week. Thank you. Okay, seeing no other business on the agenda, if I have it right, we'll move on to personal privilege. And we'll go left to right. Personal privilege, left to right. Mr. Iavino?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, you know, it's very hard to say goodbye to somebody, and, so I'm not going to say goodbye. I'm just going to think back of the times, Nancy, when you used to come into my office and would close the door, and you used to tell me, Lenny, you can't do this, I need this class in French, and you got to do this for me. And I would say, Nancy, and we would go back and forth, and then we'd end up laughing, and we'd each work it out. So it was a wonderful relationship. You're an outstanding person. You're a class act all the way, Nancy. And I want to see you around here once in a while. Can't spoil your grandchild all the time. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, Mr. Iavino.
Just one more thing. This is, this concerns the veterans. I don't know if you're aware of a group called Local Heroes. Local Heroes is a group of volunteers. In Malden, we're fortunate to have Barbara and Galvin Murphy.
Yes.
And they had, they, every year, they seek donations and they make care packages for the troops over in Afghanistan and when the troops were in Iraq, so that if anybody wants to donate any kind of junk food items, no chocolate, Twizzlers, my favorite, tuna packs, cookies, hot candy, gum, quality socks, razors, health and beauty aids, feminine items, anything of that nature, if you drop them off in Kevin Jarvis's office, and he's our Veteran Services Commissioner of Fifth Law, Garrison?
Yes.
Fifth Law, he said he would get them over to Galvin. Also, if people just want to write out a check, because unfortunately, they have to pay for the postage on all of these packages. It sounds incredible that the post office won't do this, or one of our congressmen, God forbid, should take the heed and do something about it. They paid $4,500 last year for postage. $4,500, that's incredible. So at Kiwanis, we have a little, we have a contest, we have some of our 80-year-old gentlemen who are a little well-heeled, and they issue a challenge to us, younger guys. So we raised $1,000 last year.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Iavino. I'll make a note of that issue myself on the postage. Anybody else, left to right? Ms. Dusset?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chairperson, Chairman. Nancy, I also would like to say thank you for welcoming me. It's sad to see you leave. One of the new kids on the block. Thank you to everybody for making me feel welcome. It was a wonderful learning experience. I'll be back in September. I'm quite sure I'll be seeing some of you in the summer. And also, it is the summertime, the kids will be out, and have a wonderful summer, safe and fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dusset. Anybody else, left to right? Mr. Froyo?
Yes, Nancy, welcome to the retirement ranks. You'll really enjoy it. You won't believe it, but you won't have, you'll wonder how you had time to work. I know, because you'll be very busy. Also, I'd like to speak to the, all the parents in Ward Eight. On the Fourth of July at Linden Park, we will have a celebration. Councilor Judy Boochi runs a good time. Actually, it's the best time in the city, really. It's been, for the last 30 years, the best time in the city. So I'll welcome you all down there at 8:45 on July 4th.
Thank you, Mr. Froyo. Anybody else, left to right? Okay, we'll go to my right. Ms. Di Maria?
Thank you. I'm not saying goodbye to you.
Okay.
Okay. On behalf of the citywide parents, I want to thank Dr. DeRosi for forming this group. It was an amazing work. They got together throughout the year tirelessly, and just to be quick, naming just a few events that they were responsible for. They hosted their very first citywide roller skating event. They tackled safety issues. We had Kathy Hannan from our traffic division there. We spoke on our wellness policy program, had Karen Reynolds speaking with the PTO presidents. We addressed crossing guard issues. We addressed custodial concerns. We joined forces with Malden Reeds in our schools with our one-week program. We invited the Department of Transportation and conducted a walking school bus with school committee member Kevin Kasucci. Forestale continued throughout the whole year. We partnered with Chris Murphy. Malden is Moving with the YWCA, and of course, our branding campaign contest. So the girls, and they are all girls, which is funny, we don't have a boy president, PTO president, but on behalf of all the girls, the work was amazing, and it was great, and I look forward to working with them next year. Thanks a lot.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Di Maria. Mr. Winslow?
Yeah, I too would like to thank Ms. Kasabian for all her great work, and I know, you know, for the first time, when I sat during one of the teacher orientations, I just had such confidence of her passion for teaching, and that that passion is translated into the teaching staff we have today, and that'll carry on, and I know that's one role you're going to keep involved in, so we're excited that we will see you around a little bit. I do want to say for Ward Six, Councilor Kennan will be hosting a, the Fourth of July celebration, which is at least the best in the state, if not the Malden, but, so come on out. That starts at nine o'clock at Trafton Park, so come on out and enjoy, and enjoy the celebration of our democracy things.
Okay, Ms. Cabral?
I'll go with this one. Thank you. Well, thank you, Nancy, for welcoming me and giving me advice and just being there for me. Thank you. Thank you to everybody on this school committee who has been kind enough to give me your advice and push this new kid on the block too as well along. And, you know, I, this was a learning experience, as Maria said, that I won't forget, and I will be back in September with some new issues, hopefully. I also want to say, even though you believe yours is the best, Steve and John, Ward One always has the best parties, so please come down to our Fourth of July celebration at Green Street Park, and everyone have a great summer.
Thank you, Ms. Cabral. Mr. Weldy?
I suppose as the last ward person before the chairman speaks, I'll also plug, although I have been to the Ward Eight Fourth of July celebration, and it is, it is, it is a good time. I'll give, I'll give John that. John and Judy put on a real good time for the Fourth of July, so I will say that, but because nobody else has any chance to speak, I'll say that Ward Five has the best Fourth of July celebration, so come join Councilor Murphy and I for the Ward Five celebration of the Fourth of July down at the Forestale Park on the Fourth of July from nine to one. Just a few points of personal privilege, being in the last meeting, just a quick thank you again to Dr. DeRosi for really a stellar first year, for you and your leadership team, both with Assistant Superintendent Kasabian, with Assistant Superintendent Chase, who we're looking forward to having, for a full year next year, and to our union leadership in Marguerite Gonzalez, because the way in which you all came together and operated this year was admirable. So it was, it was nice for us to be able to watch. A quick thank you as well, and we already thanked her, but to Margaret Adams, to Pat Fish, and to Paul McCarthy. I had the distinct honor, one of the best events that I enjoy going to every year, of going to the adult learners ESL class graduation two or three weeks ago. And it really was, it was quite a representation of our community as a whole, and it was one of those things that made me very proud to be a Maldonian, as you saw these parents who worked so hard in this class to learn English, but you also saw their children in the audience who are just so beaming with pride for their parents. It was a great event to be at. I think that they did a wonderful job. Congrats again to the Malden High School class of 2012. Included in that is our student representative Mallory, who we're seeing go this, or today for the year. You know, Mallory has done a wonderful job representing her fellow students on this committee, and I hold such a special place in my heart for that seat, having had to sit in that little hot seat for four years myself, and it taught me so much, and I wouldn't be where I am here without the former Ward Five school committee member and now one of our best city councilors, Greg Lucy, kind of giving me the nudge and saying, you know, you've seen this, you've done this, why don't you go ahead and take a stab at it? So Mallory, I hope someone's smart enough to give you a nudge soon when they're ready to pass on their seat, and I hope someone's smart enough to come give you a nudge to take a shot at it, too. So we'll miss you. A quick note about the budget process, and I do want to say thank you to my co-chair, Mr. Iavino, and to Mr. Froyo and Mr. Winslow. You know, this was definitely one of the most transparent and one of the most, it was a great process going through this, and I think that one of the things that I saw us do, and we heard a lot of, we heard a lot of questions and criticisms from the council about, you know, our number and our process, and one of the things that I want to specifically be thankful for from this group, because we heard this as well, is although the school committee is responsible for advocating for our schools, I think we've done quite a nice job at looking at our school department as a part of this city. You know, we don't look at our role as we're only here for the Malden Public Schools. You know, we are here representing the citizens of the city of Malden, and we do our work hoping that it acts as a part of the city of Malden. I think you see a lot of initiatives, including the reorganization, you see the admin reorg study coming up, you see a lot of things coming up where we are looking, as a school committee, to better utilize our own services so that we can save more for our city, and we can do more for our city. So I think that, you know, I'd like to applaud my fellow members for their commitment, not only to our schools, but to our entire community. It's an honor to serve with all of you. And I guess last but not least, to Nancy, you must be fed up at this point of having the longest-running tribute to a retiree in a long time. It's been months now, but it is, it is incredibly well-deserved, because, you know, I don't think I'll ever be able to put into words what you mean to the system, what you mean to me personally, because there isn't an area of this system that you haven't touched, and there isn't an area that you won't always be remembered as one of the most honorable people who has ever graced central office. You know, I enjoyed very much sitting up with you at graduation, and I've sat with Nancy at graduation, Malden High School's graduation, for a couple of years now, and I have to say, you know, it might have taken her by surprise, but, you know, having Dr. DeRosi call up Nancy to speak was by far one of the classiest things that I have ever seen at a Malden High School graduation, and giving Nancy that recognition that she so deserves, I was beaming in pride for you, and that, to me, was really something else. You know, as a young teacher, a young teacher from a program that Nancy works at, you know, it's impossible not to think of my own teachers when you're teaching during the year. You think back of all the people who have sort of touched your life over the course of your education, and, you know, last week, as I was saying goodbye to my 122 kids and sending them off, you can't help but think what these kids will remember you for years from now. You know, you think of your own teachers and how you remember them, and you can't help but think, you know, how are these kids going to remember me? You know, what is it that's going to stick with them about me? And, you know, as you're preparing to end your service at the end of the month, your long and distinguished service, and, you know, maybe you'll be thinking similar kinds of questions, and I hope you realize that there are thousands of individuals, probably all over the entire world, there are thousands of individuals, myself included, who will think about how wonderful they felt and how nurtured they were and how much they learned when they think of Nancy Kasabian. So Nancy, thank you for everything. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Weldy. Anybody else for personal privilege that I missed? Ms. Dusset for a second time.
Real quick, I have to, Steve Ultrino will kill me if I don't plug the best Ward Two -- to barbecue on Fourth of July. Come down, it'll be wonderful, we'll have fun, and it does outrank all of the wards. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dusset. From the chair, let me first, once again, apologize for being tardy tonight, but I had a very good reason for being so, I had a chance to meet the President of the United States tonight, and it's something that I will never forget as Chair, I knew that was coming, Mr. Iavino just asked me, did you get any money, did you get any money from him? But I'll tell you, to Mr. Iavino's point, I had, you know, all these things prepared, and then when you're in front of them, you're just, everything's out the door, so all I could keep doing was just saying, hey, you need to come to Malden, you know, cityofmalden.org, you know, visit us on social media, but it was, it's a moment I'll never forget, but I did get the chance to at least mention to him three times, you know, about the City of Malden, so, but, you know, of course, my heart resides here in Malden, so I wanna next, really continue to compliment that superb effort by our Golden Tornado's varsity softball team. I think the article over the weekend said it all, Coach Furlong, I think, sent it to us, where one of the editors of the paper stated, you know, when he, you know, recaptured what happened at Malden, what he thought best described the effort of the city was the pride and the community input into what went on with that team, so continue to be proud of the players, the coaches, the principal, the athletic director, everybody that was involved, on a tremendous season that will never be forgotten in the city's history. I do wanna just elaborate on the Independence Day events going on around the city, you can visit cityofmalden.org to get the time and locations of all the different celebrations that are happening across the city, and also, if you haven't already, we started issuing a citywide e-newsletter now that goes out every two weeks, so if anybody is not receiving that, or you have neighbors or residents that would like to be included on our email list, please email info@cityofmalden.org. And again, we're trying to send those out every couple of weeks, and some of the things you will see in that newsletter is, for instance, tomorrow is the Second Farmers Market, which is taking place right out here in the City Hall Courtyard, from three to six, that'll be happening all summer into September, the only day that we won't be having it is July third. I will try very hard tomorrow not to take Assistant Superintendent Chase's chocolate chip cookies, which I did at the First Farmers Market, but they were delicious, for, for the record. And then also, we're trying a different thing in the downtown this year, we're gonna have street performers, so if you know of anyone that is looking to, someone just pointed to Mr. Froyo, so please contact, again, our, the city, at info@cityofmalden.org, if you know of, you know, we have one today that submitted an application, he's an elementary school student, might even be at the high school at this point, but he's going to play some guitar at one of the three locations we've picked out in the downtown, so it'll take place on Friday and Saturday nights. Again, just to try to mix things up, see if we can make a connection to, you know, bring people to the downtown. One other thing I just wanna let you know too about, you know, I think we're heading in the right direction with respect to summer jobs for teens, last year, we funded a hundred and thirty, today, we're at three hundred and twenty-five teens funded. So, you know, I do wanna thank the school committee and the city council, and everybody else involved, for getting behind what I consider to be, you know, one of many proposals to, you know, keep the city moving ahead. So that's great news, I'm, you know, proud of everybody that's involved trying to, you know, make this thing happen. And then just a personal note from the chair, I do wanna compliment everybody here, you know, it's been a tough six months, as you can imagine, on my end, but it never was with respect to the school committee, so that says a lot about, you know, all of you as individuals, and collectively as a group, I, you know, looking back, I couldn't be prouder of, you know, what you're able to accomplish here, so, you know, congratulations to you all. And then I think everything has been said and will be, continue to be said about our Assistant Superintendent Nancy Kasabian, so I thought, what I would add is, tonight, for the first time, I think, during our session so far, is I'll entertain a motion to recess the meeting in honor of Assistant Superintendent Kasabian, and that'll be printed in the journal in the minutes, for all to see in the future. And just for the committee's edification, the difference between adjourning and recessing is recessing, we could come back into session at any time, and the reason I wanna leave our, us the ability to do that, in case anything happens here in the last week before the fiscal year closes, and if we adjourned, we'd have to repost, and then there's a timeframe upon which we would have to do that, so I wanna make sure we're in a position to be able to react, in case anything happens here in the next couple of days. So we have a motion to recess, subject to the call of the Chair, in honor of Assistant Superintendent Nancy Kasabian, made by Mr. Iavino, and we don't need a second on adjourning, is that right? I always forget that last one, not recessing. Okay, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it? Meeting is recessed.